Good evening. We're going to start the agenda portion of the meeting for the June 3rd, 2015 Council. Resolution number 500A, resolution to read 2015 City Market Budget by Title. 500B, resolution to adopt 2015 City Market Budget. Ordnance is, it's at first reading, I'm sorry, second reading. 504, orders to amend supplement to devised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, chapter 10 vehicles and traffic, schedule 39 parking details for handicapped persons, and schedule 29 high limit parking. Add two handicap parking zones at 262 Cedar Street and six Ruckers Streets. Add one high limit parking area on Somerset Street. 506, amendment management salary ordinance. Ordnance is, I'm first reading, 501. Orders authorizing the guaranteed by the city of New Brunswick in the County Millsack, David Jersey, amount exceeding 26 million dollars, 26 aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue and refunding bond series 2015 of the parking authority of the city of New Brunswick. Resolutions, 501 approve amendments. 502 approve payroll. 503, authorized refund for reduced pack sales activities. 504 approve amendment. Approve amendment of resolution R.021525. Reason, change date from June 7th, 2015 to June 14th, 2015. Approve request for parking vehicles in Dublau Park requested by the Francis T. Parker Memorial Home. Location Dublau Park for two events in 2015. Dates are June 14th, 2015 from 6:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Wednesday, December 2nd, 2015 from 1:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Number of parking spaces is 40. 505 is quoted requesting the applicant. 506, approve request for street closing in Houston City property requested by New Brunswick Cultural Center. Location is Martin Square Park. Street location, Livingston Avenue between George and New Streets. The third annual Central Jersey Jazz Festival, date Saturday, September 19th, 2015, time is 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. 507, approve amendment of resolution R.041548. Reason, pay additional legal fees in the amount of $2,864.50. Lawrence Bitterman Esquire, the police officer Daniel Maison, the matter of the lowest senior battery stated of our city of New Brunswick. $17,603.50 to $20,468. 508, approve request for use of city property, Dublau Park Tennis Courts, 11 courts, requested by Rutgers University Tennis Team. Location is Dublau Park Tennis Courts. Open tennis tournament sponsored by Intercollegiate Tennis Association and the Rutgers University Tennis Team. Daytime, July 17th, 2015, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, July 18th, 2015, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Sundays, July 19th, 2015, period end, 7:00 p.m. 509, approve chapter 159 budget insertion. State of New Jersey Department of Transportation, 2015 municipal aid program for Georgia's Road, the amount is $247,487. 510, approve chapter 159 budget insertion. State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for 2015 Clean intercity seatbelt campaign for enforcement grant, amount is $4,000. 511, approve chapter 159 budget insertion. State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for Safe and Secure Communities Program, the amount is $60,000. 512, approve chapter 159 budget insertion. State of New Jersey, 2015 Clean Communities Grant, amount is $62,453.78. 513, approve chapter 159 budget insertion. State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, Federal Emergency Management Agency, for water treatment plant pump station generator project, grant amount 78804, matching now, 321196. 514, approve chapter 159 budget insertion, New Brunswick City Market, for 2015 Clean Team, the amount is $113,000. 515, approve resolution to provide 50,000 of CPPTG funds to expand the nature for mature through nature community learning and gardening program for free additional public school centers, middle school, boardroom school, and kindergarten school. 516, approve amendment of resolution R.041549. Reason, pay additional legal fees in the amount of $1,024.10, Lawrence Bitterman, Detective Kristen Woodborn, Honor of Matters, for city of New Brunswick. $13,000 to $17,500 to $14,458.50. 517, authorize lease of copy machine for the municipal prosecutor's office, for GE Capital Information Tech Solutions through businesses Rico USA, for one Rico model, 3054SP digital copier system. $84.70 per month commencing July 1st, 2015, and ending July 30th, 2019, 48-month contract. Date contract A82709, difference cost per copy, copiers M/0053. 518, advising consent to parking authority board appointment. Name Andrea Tito White, expires December 31st, 2019. 519, buys and sets to cable television provider board appointment, Bobby Ferguson, expires 30th, December 31st, 2016. 520, buys and sets to Board of Ethics appointment, Anthony Jones, expires September 31st, 2018. 521, approve amendment of resolution R.120987, reason, change names of vehicles for the Sustainable Jersey Municipal Certification Process. 522, authorize mayor and city permanent security team notice for 400 Jersey Avenue, Hubble Works Garage site. 523, approve award of contract with George Dappler Incorporated for bus transportation for 2015 Summer Fund Program, specification number 441-15P, the amount is $35,484.90. 524, approve amendment of resolution R.051431. Reason, pay additional amount of $6,000 to Ameritech Engineering for professional engineering and surveying services, in connection with the towed police agent catalog, not to exceed $6,000. 525, approve award of contract with Lubenek LLC, the first liter motor oil lubricant, 24-month period commencing June 4th, 2015, and ending June 3rd, 2017, specification number 431-15P, not to exceed 7150806. 526, approve award of contract for janitorial supplies, with term enterprise trading as Allen Company Supply Company, the amount is $7,533.20, the office basis incorporated, the amount is $32,892.43, with central polybag work, the amount is $6,809.20, Bio Shine Incorporated, amount 7596. Term, 12-month period commencing June 4th, 2015, and ending June 3rd, 2016, specification number 426-15P. 527, approve fiber optic cable agreement and right-of-way use agreement, requested by CSC TKR LLC, doing business as Cable Vision of Ryan Valley. Installation of fiber optic cable, location East City Avenue, Crosswalk Street, Hardenberg Street, Somerset Street, Division Street, for Robert L. Johnson University Hospital. 528, authorize mayor and city permanent security team agreement, for state of New Jersey Office of Emergency Management, for hazard mitigation grant generator project. 529, approve amendment of resolution R.041530. Reason, accelerate the work scheduling, utilize the light in traffic and pedestrian traffic in the area, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance, requested by 70 College Avenue LLC. Complete work at Rutgers LL Student Center, date Saturday, June 6th, August 29th, 2015, as soon as holidays, time is 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. 530, approve resolution R.091423, change order number 1, with Z Brothers Concrete Contract in court ready, reason, deletion of paving in the intersection of Hamilton Street and Lewis Street, and add paving on Somerset Street between Easton Avenue and Hardenberg Street, where Hamilton Street Runway approved, specification number 845-14, the amount is $26,572. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase in 20% reward of the original contract. 531, approve amendment of resolution R.011597, reason, for additional service to be compliant with the tracking and reporting partners of the Affordable Care Act, with Pride Point LLC, for 2015 municipal payroll services, not to exceed $10,000. 532, approve award of contract with Garden State Highway Products, for 2015 furnished delivered regular police signs, specification number 888-15, not to exceed $36,263.04. 533, approve reject award of contract to be determined, reconstruction of recreation parks, specification number 85114R, not to exceed as to be determined. 534, approve award of contract with Matrix New World Engineering Incorporated, for construction inspection services, reconstruction of recreation parks, by specification number 87815R, not to exceed $95,200. 535 is held at the city terminal. 536, resolution concurring amendments to land use ordinance to the planning board forward given. Do you want to call the meeting to order? Put a plea call and roll.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming is absent. Councilmember Garlotti?
Present.
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Readings Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the United Notice, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public readings of the municipal council of City of New Brunswick, as you filed with the city clerk, have been placed on the proper gold of board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted in the official newspaper of the city of New York, namely, the whole news Tribune. Please stand and call the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visual liberity and justice for all.
You'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving our armed forces, who have lost their lives in battle. We'll also have a moment of silence for Anthony Raska, who lost his life as a state trooper, and his brother as a teacher in our schools. We have minutes for mid-six, 2015. I get a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have public hearing on the, well, the one is adjourned at the request of what is the fee?
Correct.
Number two, Kelly's Corner?
Yes, Mr. Council President, members of council, members in the public, this is the time for the public hearing, special condition to be placed upon Kelly's Corner, a liquor license establishment in the city of New Brunswick. This is the time set forth for the public to comment with the licensee, if someone is present, licensee is represented, regarding special conditions. Before I ask that the council president ask for any public comment, I'd just like to read for the benefit of the council and the public what the special conditions are that are subject to the council's review and possible imposition with respect to this upcoming license year. As previously, the three conditions that are placed upon this particular license are as follows. The licensee shall not alter the premises from the layout shown in the sketch plan previously furnished by licensee and approved by the council resolution R-061306, and on file with the city of clerk, without first obtaining further approval of this council by resolution. Second, there shall be no live music or live entertainment provided, that this shall not preclude the playing of a jukebox or television set. And then lastly, the license is granted subject to compliance with ordinance O-029609, as amended, relative to educational requirements for managers. These are the three special conditions. It's my understanding, from the tavern report submitted to the council, that it is the police department's recommendation that at the time of renewal, let these three special conditions be re-imposed. As I indicated before, this is the time for public hearing on the special condition imposition. And at this time, I would ask the council president to inquire if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter.
Would anybody from the public like to speak on the Kelly's Corner conditions? Anybody from the public? Seeing done?
If there's no one here to speak on it, we can close the hearing. I will advise the council, though I have not been contacted by the licensee, or my department, or council representing the licensee, expressing any objection to the imposition of these special conditions. So having noted that, we can close the hearing, and when the council does have the particular renewal resolution for its consideration, it will contain, assuming the council pleasure these three special conditions.
Do you need a motion to close the hearing on Kelly's?
Yeah, motion to close the hearing.
I get the motion to close the hearings.
So moved.
Second. Both publicly?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Number three, we have the gala cafe and restaurant, same thing, contingency?
Yes, as a result of the licensee's attorney requesting, adjourned on that matter and the prior one.
Okay. Four, we have the award of contract, we have the recreation park. Are both parties here this evening?
Mr. President, I don't see Mr. R.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. Yes, both parties are here.
Who would you like to talk to first, Mr. Anderson?
I'd like Mr. Golden, briefly.
Sure. Mr. Golden? Could you please state your name? We've got a court reporter, could you state your name and title, please?
Thomas S. Golden, city engineer.
Mr. Golden, tell us about the, what is this project about?
We plan to reconstruct recreation park to include a number of new amendments, different from what's at the park today, including a skate park, a skateboard park, a water feature, as well as the typical basketball court, soccer fields, picnic areas.
I understand it's a total of nine bids, is that right?
That's correct.
The two little bids were from TNS, or Thomas, and from Flanagan.
Yes, sir.
Do you have the numbers there in front of you?
I do. The bid from TNS was $2,547,079. And the second bid from Flanagan was $2,720,666, $720,666.75.
And the, when the project was bid, did the specifications include a provision of our resolution 101233?
Yes, for contractor certification.
You have to say it to recognize that this is the genuine thing?
Yes.
It was a two-page contract. It was sponsored.
Hold on, hold on. Court reporter can't take you down while she's trying to do something else.
Do you have a copy of the resolution there in front of you, 101233?
Yes, two pages of it.
Can you read paragraph 11?
All contractors and subcontractors that perform significant work on the public facility, project having a value of $100,000 or more, shall be required to affirmatively provide evidence of confirmation, compliance with proof of participation in an apprenticeship program currently registered and approved by the United States Department of Labor and Peren USDL, and the Peren, or the New Jersey Department of Labor, or submit a statement of agreement not to employ any worker of less than journeyman status on the project. Additionally, apprenticeship programs shall meet the criteria set forth in section 8.1 of this resolution.
And that was included in the bid back, is that right?
Yes, it was.
And the bids were received, was there a protest lodged by Flanagan Contracting against Thomas?
Yes, there was.
And was that addressed to the allegation that Thomas did not have an apprenticeship program?
That was the allegation, yes.
I don't think one of those senior reporters want to ask Mr. Golden any questions. I'll ask Mr. Thomas.
Does anybody have any questions for the city engineer? Any of the parties? Yes. Please start, state your name, who you're with for the record, please.
This is Tinto Thomas, from TNS Builder located at 174 Cedar Road, New York, New Jersey. As per the resolution, we were to provide journey worker or above.
What's your position on the company?
Project engineer. I'm the son of the owner.
Are you vice president also?
Yes, vice president.
You are authorized to interfere?
Yes.
It's my understanding from our earlier conversations, that Thomas, shorthand, does not have an apprenticeship program, is it?
Yes.
And how did you intend to comply with the requirements of paragraph 1?
We were going to provide journey workers. They meet the requirements as per Department of Labor, which is to, which is to have on the job training for the work listed in the project.
And what were the trades that you were going to employ in the job?
Journey workers, masons, bricklayer masons, concrete masons, carpenters if needed. Then there's also electrical plumbing, HVAC, and all that. Those are like licensed, specialized licensed people that needs to go to classes and take requirements to be licensed, so they'll be.
And is your contention that you will imply, employ only people having journeyman status?
Yes.
Are people that you will employ, regular employees of Thomas?
Yes.
Year-round?
Yeah, they have at least five, at least five or more years' experience with TNS Builders and various projects. And I've also submitted to your office a couple of projects similar to this that we have worked on, and that has employees that will be working on this project too.
And I, my first view of the information from the Department of Labor, showing what the requirements would be for journeyman status?
Yes.
Would you tell us in your own words, or give us in writing, whatever you have, to show that all of your employees would be journeyman status?
How would you like, you need to write it, and like, do you want me to write list projects that they have been on, or?
Just tell us what they go through in order to have that status. Do you consider, without having gone through an apprenticeship, with that, but let me go back to the, just for, thanks, Mr. Thomas. In the trades, there's an apprentice, there's a journeyman, and then there's a master, is that right?
Yeah.
And one way to get to journeyman is by going through and through the apprenticeship program. And your people have not done that. And you're saying that they have achieved journeyman status by virtual on-the-job work experience?
Exactly.
Would you describe that for us?
Well, if there was a bricklayer mason, if I hired someone new, they'll be under someone that was experienced in a bricklayer, and they will go through training for at least six or eight months, and then they'll be on the job doing it themselves, and then same thing with all my employees. And also, they have 30-hour OSHA training to, you know, be on the job and work on the project also.
Other than getting that timing grade, so to speak, so many months, do they have to take any other kind of training or program in order to be considered a journeyman by you?
No.
How about your subcontractors? What subs are you going to be using?
Well, as you know, I can't do electrical work, I can't do plumbers, so you have to have a specific licensed electrician, a licensed plumber, especially with the electrician, they have to go year-round classes in order to keep up their licenses to.
And you're proposing use Raymond Electric?
Exactly.
You're proposing to use Portuguese Steel?
Yeah.
You're proposing to use?
Has been plumbing.
Who?
Has been plumbing.
And how about plumbing?
They have plumbers.
And then you've got this stolen ranch?
Yeah, that's the, that's a skate park to install, is going to be installed in the skate park itself. They have, they also submitted their own certification, which was required by the bid, you know, showing that they're experienced.
And are the, these various subcontractors we've identified, are their employees all going to be journeyman status or better?
I'm pretty, I'm sure that they're exactly the way how I will employ my employees, I'm pretty sure. They're trained, because especially with electrical, you can't send someone that's not competent in touch with electrical wire, and the company can shut down. You're talking about companies that have been around for 20 years, and they know how to train their employees, and they trained their employees better than, you know.
And you actually asked, were you, whether or not they are journeyman status?
Yeah, I've worked with them, but I'll ask them, and if you want a certification from them, or something stating that their employees are journeyman status or higher, I can do that for you, but.
Now, you've got a document with you that would say to us that you will not employ anybody on the job less than journeyman status, is that right?
Right now, I have, it's a previous document, but I'm not sure, this is just journeyman status, will pay journeyman status or higher, but that was the question before, but I can make the document stating that we will provide a journeyman status.
Payment is not going to, is not going to be enough?
Yes.
It is my understanding, and I thought I had seen it, but I couldn't find it, that you had written to us and said that you were agreeing not to employ anyone on the project except our journeyman status?
Yeah, that's, I mean, even in my previous letters, even though it doesn't specifically say, I'm stating that my employees are journeyman, and that's the people that will be used on the project.
Depending upon the outcome tonight, do you want that in writing?
Okay.
Now, you don't have that for your subs.
Okay, I can, I can provide that for you.
In what?
As soon as possible.
We're trying to wrap this up tonight, we brought it down here three times, both sides here.
Yeah.
So you're telling us that you think, but you're not certain?
Well, if, like, especially the people that are being employed, they have licenses that are submitted with their names for the.
Not concerned about the license, I'm concerned about the alternate provision of compliance with the apprenticeship required. I have all the questions, maybe Mr. Flanagan will. Don't go away, Mr. Thomas, let's get you right there, course example.
Please start, say your name and your company affiliation for the record, please, sir.
Robert Flanagan, the president of Flanagan Contracting.
Thank you. Mr. Flanagan, before you start, do you have any questions of Mr. Thomas?
I'm just going to read a couple things.
And then they ask him?
Yeah.
This is not your case, you got any questions?
Yes, and according to the thing, you need a Department of Labor certification to do a training program. Do you have a Department of Labor?
Certification, no, but that's only if you're going to do, if you're going to use an apprentice, is that right?
No, because additionally, you need to have an apprentice program, Department of Labor. According to the ordinances, it's an additional, it's not, there's no choice, you still have to have an apprentice program approved by the Department of Labor.
Well, what it says, sir, is that if he doesn't have the apprentice program approved by the Department of Labor, he has to agree to employ everybody on the job to be a journeyman. So that even means his subcontractors. So he has to go back to these guys, because they all bitted jobs, you know, so I would drive it very hard to believe that they all bitted to do it at journey, did you bitted to do it all at journey rate, sir?
No.
So, you know, that's, you know, for all everybody on the job, you're saying they weren't going to bring any lower rate help, is something that we all have to think about, and to say that, you know, but if he's going to provide a certificate that says everybody's going to be a journeyman on the job, then that's what he, that's what he has to do. But if he does that, but it's either one or the other, he either has to put all journeyman on the job, or have a certified apprenticeship program where he can put apprentices on the job. That type of ordinance reads, just to let you know that. Go ahead.
Mr. President, the, with respect to the pay, because there's federal money in this job, you have to pay prevailing wage in any event?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any questions you want to put to Mr. Thomas, and if not, why we'll hear what you have.
The term apprentice, the term journeyman, is an educated craftsman, and basically, bricklayer apprentices, we've even said what a bricklayer is. The term of occupation shall take three years before you're a journeyman, and basically it says within six months, he can.
I did say five years if you experience a more.
Yeah, but you said that the. Yeah, but you said that you have to go through a program to become a journeyman. There are still classroom hours, according to Department of Labor, that you have to serve, and it hasn't certified to me or you that these people have gone to any formal training in order to become a journeyman status.
That's the question I wanted. On the people who have gotten your experience of three years or five years, whatever the training might be, have they had training outside on the job?
Outside on the job?
Any classes anywhere?
Other than what they have, high school graduation, if they went to college, that's a different story. But, you know, I mean, my thing is if you get an on-the-job training, it's going to be better than... That's my opinion, of course, but, you know, there are other things, like if a company boasts a program, they'll... I'll send my workers, like the carpenters, like they'll teach a carpenter how to, you know, do certain stuff. I'll send them that.
You did see the learning requirements that were set forth in each of the trades, as I sent them to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Can you tell us with certainty that the people that you are calling journeyman have fulfilled those requirements?
I believe so. I'll review it again, but I really think, you know, they see that all those requirements.
Mr. Flanagan, do you have anything else?
No other questions.
Do we have office fires?
Yeah, basically, our point is that apprentice is a person who's trained. To get through a bricklayer, you have to spend over 500 hours of classroom time, covering math, covering skills, covering safety. And it's not just an on-the-job training. It's a classroom, and each craft has classroom training for their apprentices to become a journeyman. It's not just... I can't make a person a journeyman. I've been in business for 35 years. I cannot take a person off the street, train them, and say they're a journeyman in six months when it takes years to get to that status. Department of Labor has regulations on this. Your ordinance has regulations on it.
Mr. Flanagan, I think you've analyzed what we threw you before in the Lord Department and some confronted it before we then reached out to a learning experience. But the rules and regulations are, in essence, which Mr. Flanagan said. It's easy to me that Mr. Thomas can't say with certainty that his subcontractors have that requirement. It's really up to you to decide what the truth should be. Okay. Are we going to have any more testimony or anybody else? Anyone else here wants to be heard on this matter? Anybody here from organized labor? I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Would that be a motion to go into closed session to discuss the recreation part?
Yes. Before you do that, do you have any questions, either of these contractors? Not at this time. I just asked a little question. You said that you have in your bid, sir, to have apprentices in your...
Yes.
Do you have apprentices in your bid, sir? When you put the bid in, are you still with a low bid or you had no apprentices in your...
No.
I'd make a motion to go into closed session to discuss...
The testimony.
Testimony earlier today.
Possible litigation regarding this particular bid award dealing with specification number 851-14?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan.
Second.
I need a second.
Oh, I thought you were saying... So I'll make the motion then.
Okay, you can give a second?
Second.
One favor? Aye? I'm sorry, roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
Going into closed session to discuss the matter, whatever decision, if any, is made, will be formally reported with a motion out here, so it's not going to be decided in secret.
And for the record, Mr. Anderson is not participating. We will confirm that this is closed at prior meeting.
Make a motion to go back into open session, please?
So moved.
Give a second? Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson? Here. Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
Discussion closed session involved about the requirements in bids for compliance with the apprenticeship training or the alternate manner of satisfying that. And it was a census that the testimony advanced relative to the alternate method was not precise enough, was not completely enough to satisfy council that the alternate approach to apprenticeship training has been satisfied, and therefore, there will be resolution of copy in appropriate form awarding the contract to Flanigan's and opposing approaches. And copy that would be, I guess, available to anybody who wanted that present out. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have number five, adoption of the New Brunswick City Market 2015 budget.
Mr. Council President, I understand the city clerk is prepared to read a resolution for consideration by the council regarding the ability to read the city market budget by title only. Mr. Clerk?
Whereas New Jersey statutes amputated Title 40:56-84 provides that 2015 New Brunswick City Market budget as advertised shall be read in full at the public hearing, or that it may be read by its titles only. If at least one week prior to the date of the hearing, a complete copy of the approved budget as advertised, A, shall be posted in a public place where public notices are customarily posted in the principal public building, and B, copies are made available to each person requesting same during said week and during the public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of New Brunswick that it is hereby declared that the conditions of Title 40:56-84, 1A and 1B, have been met, and therefore, the budget of 2015 shall be read by title only.
The motion is second. Public hearing on the resolution, and then if the resolution passes, we can go ready to the public hearing on the adoption of the city market budget.
So moved.
Give a second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Pleasure by title. Yes, please, thank you.
New Brunswick City Market proposed budget. Total income, $520,966.2. Total administrative expense, $207,966. Total program expenses, $313,000. Total expenses, $520,966. Thank you.
Resolution?
I'll open it up to public hearing.
Oh, sorry. Can we open that up to public... Anybody have a public comment on that? Yes, sir, Mr. Cradville. Step up, please.
Good evening. Charles Cradville of New Brunswick. I have a few questions. Under program expenses, I have three. Downtown Clean Team says it'll be its experience, a cutback in staffing hours and the frequency of cleaning in select areas to maintain cost. Can I get some more details on those three things, the cutback in staffing, the cutback in hours, and the cutback in the frequency of cleaning in select areas? Can you tell me what those areas are?
Mr. Mark Chatter, you really have a fantastic...
Is she here?
She's sitting right here.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I didn't see you there.
Camps Stupanic, Executive Director of New Brunswick City Market. In order to keep a maintained or leveled funding of $113,000, we had to cut back on some hourly staff, which is approximately four hours a week. And that would just be in the downtown area.
Okay. So the same number of people are employed, just one person's going to get four less hours in the area that's affected is downtown? Thank you.
They'll be allocated somewhere else.
Okay. And then there's another... This is a decrease from last year's proposed budget for the facade improvements program. Can you tell me why it's being decreased? I think that's a really good program.
It's based upon the number of new businesses at the time the budget was created. But we saw inquiries for help.
More applications, okay. And I see it's capped at 2,000 now? Okay, well, I'll just say I do see a substantial increase for $31,500 going to power washing, graffiti, and gum removal. And while that may have its place, I see it's three times as much as we're spending on facade improvement grants. So I just wanted to ask, why is that stuff such a priority versus the facade improvements? I mean, it's a lot of money, $31,000 to clean up gum, graffiti, and just do washing.
It is. And the services have increased. The number of times that the vendor has to go out to remove graffiti has increased. The increase has also expanded along the sidewalks for gum removal and grease stains and things like that. So the services on an ongoing basis has increased. But we don't have an increase of the number of facade improvements. We don't have an increased number of businesses requesting funding for assistance in the facade right now.
There's not an increase in the number of businesses asking for facade grants?
No. Not for right now, no. We have an increase of businesses opening or turning over, but not a lot of them are asking for facade improvements.
Okay, I must have misheard before, because I thought that there was... That there were more businesses asking about that type of thing, right?
I believe she said no.
No. Okay, I must be mistaken.
Who are your chairs around with you?
Yeah, I just... I want to express my concern about spending all that money on graffiti and government. Can you tell me, is it on public property only? Or is this... Are we cleaning up graffiti that's on privately-owned buildings?
The graffiti is cleaned in the downtown, on the buildings, along the street scape, so the benches, the electrical boxes, the poles, the stop signs, sidewalks, the train trestles, car trestles, Route 18 by Highland Park, parts of Route 18 from Highland Park north on Route 18. So the Walkover Bridge and the JJ Bridge, or the one that comes down Johnson Drive, the brick bridge, the stone bridge, those get hit quite a bit, as well as the Route 27 corridor. Because those are all major roadways into the downtown area. So we want to maintain them.
I understand. I've seen the graffiti there. I just... If you own a building in downtown New Brunswick, surely you have some resources. And if there's graffiti on your building, I don't see why it can't be your responsibility to address that. Is it not... I mean, if there was graffiti on a property I owned that wasn't in downtown, I would be fined for not fixing it, right?
Well, this is the function of the city market. It's a team of restaurants and people that have gotten together, and they form this alliance, and this is what they feel that they want to spend their money on. They think it's a blade on the city, you know, the gum removal.
And that's part of the reason that the businesses or the property owners are paying an assessment. And this is one of the benefits for that. We remove the graffiti to make sure that the downtown is aesthetically pleasing, whether it's graffiti on a building, on a lamppost, on the sidewalk, as well as the gum removal.
I'm just saying, if money's tight and something has to go, these wealthy people who own buildings in downtown New Brunswick should clean up their own buildings. And then there'd be more money available for other things, including cleaning up the lampposts and the sidewalks and the train trestles and the roadways. Does that not make sense?
Anything else, Mr. Cradville? I mean, it makes sense, what you're saying out loud makes sense, but it also makes sense that these people, what they're doing also makes sense also.
I understand. I can see it both ways, but I'm just saying, if money's tight, let's make the tough choice here and, you know...
I believe with their budget, they did make tough choices. I'm sure she wishes she had a big pot of money that she's able to sustain all of the good things that city market does. But, you know, this is why they have budgets. This is what the board and the people that are involved in city market decided to do. Let's see if it's right or wrong. Let's see how it works out.
Okay. Well, I just want to express my support for the facade improvement grants. I think that's a good thing, and I'd like to see more put into that in the future. And maybe, you know, have the folks who own the buildings clean up their own buildings. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Anyone else on the city budget, I mean, the city market budget? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the city market budget.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
We have ordinance on second reading, 504, in order to amend and supplement the revised amendments of the city budget, Chapter 10, vehicles and traffic, Schedule 39, parking zones for handicapped persons, and Schedule 29, time-limited parking, and two handicap parking zones at 262 Sealy Street and 6 Rutter Street, and one time-limited parking area on Somerset Street. Would anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance? Seeing that?
Move the ordinance. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Barlatti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes.
506, amend the management salary ordinance. Anybody from the public like to comment on this particular ordinance?
Good evening. Once again, Charles Cradville. I'd just like to know, for the two positions that are being added, how many people work in or are going to be working in both of those titles?
Mr. Mark Chatter, put your name to that, please.
We have one in each, is my understanding. We have one for Recreation Program Administrator, a senior citizen, and one sort of repair supervisor.
Great. Do you mind telling me the names of those people?
No, I do not have.
Are they already working for the city? Have they been in this role already, or this is just sort of after the fact?
Have they worked for the city already? Will we know?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
We'll get that information for you, Mr. Cradville. I apologize.
Okay, well...
Do we have people in those positions?
So I...
We'll get any information.
Right, so I'm concerned about maybe passing this ordinance without that information. If I run the council, I'd want that information before passing this. So just to be clear, we don't know the names of the people. We don't know if they're working for the city. We probably don't know whether their positions were advertised publicly, or how many people applied, or whether there's a demand for more of these people. Maybe we should hold this ordinance until those questions are...
Mr. Council President, if I could?
Yes.
There are many titles in the ordinance that may not have the people who actually fill them and get the gum. So no harm in adopting this ordinance on second reading, which creates these titles with the ranges as indicated. If they're never filled, or if they're filled in the future, I mean, there's no impediment to that.
Thank you, Council. Anything else, Mr. Cradville?
Yeah, I mean, is there any harm in passing a paid sick leave law, paid sick leave ordinance?
Mr. Cradville, shut your mouth. You were doing so good. Everything was running so smooth. We're on this, we're on this, the management salary. Come back and talk about that.
They shouldn't.
I like your T-shirt. We're working on it.
This is really a travesty that, you know...
Travesty is a travesty?
It is a travesty that ordinances come across your desk, that you do not know the purpose for it. You're just... You're told that, well, there's no harm in passing it. Just pass it, and you'll figure it out later. And now, people have been coming for weeks to these meetings demanding a law that their citizens actually want, and you're stifling that. So that's my point there, is that there's no harm in passing a paid sick leave ordinance, but you won't do that because Mayor Kayle is not answering.
First of all, I take humbly, I'm not stifling... We're not stifling anything. What gives you the intention that we're stifling anything?
Well...
Because it's not done yet?
Exactly. There's been... How many meetings did it take to pass the law making it illegal to ask for change at night?
Mr. Cradville, anything else on this particular ordinance? I'm asking one more time. Anything else on this particular ordinance?
Asking for paid sick leave, and you're not passing it. This, you're willing to just pass through without... This, you're willing to just pass through without knowing the facts.
Anything else on this particular ordinance, sir?
Yes. I ask that you hold this ordinance because it's not clear who... Whether there are people that are serving these functions, what their names are, and, you know... Whether or not the positions were advertised. I think these are fair questions to ask about these positions. Precedents are being set. When you create a new job title, you're creating something new that's going to last for decades, for years, for a long time. And I think that you should know what you're about to vote on. That's my point. You should know the answers to these questions before you vote on it. It's not fair.
We're starting titles on second reading, amendment to the management salary ordinance. It's two new titles that we want to use for a promotional opportunity for a current employee, Sewer Repair Supervisor, and for a new hire in the Senior Center Recreation Program Administrator, Senior Citizens.
And so who's going to fill those roles? Excuse me? Who are the names of the people that are going to fill these roles?
We don't know yet.
I don't. There's only one that's filled.
Only one is going to fill the role, and I don't want to let it... Right?
Right. If there's not any ordinance...
So why are they being created, then? What's the purpose of this ordinance? The purpose has not been explained yet.
I just explained it to you why it was being created, didn't I? What don't you understand?
So, well, what I don't understand is if there's a need for these positions, are there people that are already serving that function? Or do we need to hire them? Or are they already on the payroll, but we just need to create the title for them? What is the purpose of this creation of the titles? If you said, hey, there's a person who's doing this work and we need to create this title, her name is this, and she makes this much money, and she's been with the city for this long, that's why we're doing it, I would say, great. You're being diligent and you're keeping an eye on what the city is doing. But when you just say, there's no harm in creating new titles. You know, there's no harm in creating new titles. We don't know who's going to fill them, or what their names are, or whether they're doing a good job, or whether they're brand new, or whether they live in New Brunswick or not. You're just creating new jobs, and you don't even know who's going to fill them. Correct?
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Anything else?
Don't do it. Please don't create new jobs if you don't know who's going to fill them or why you need to.
Thank you. Yes. Anybody else? Anybody else on the ordinance? Sealy, ma'am?
Move the ordinance. Second.
Councilmember Anderson? Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Ordinance will discuss it on first reading. 501, ordinance authorizing a guarantee by the City of New Brunswick County Middlesex, David Jersey, not exceeding 26 million aggregate principal amount of city guaranteed parking revenue and refunding bond, series 2015, of the Parking Authority of the City of New Brunswick. Does anyone move that?
Move the ordinance setting down June 17th at 5:30 for public hearing, same date to be advertised. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We have resolutions, 501 to 536. We're holding 535, and we're holding 505. Would anybody from the city, or, I'm sorry, would anybody from the public like to comment on these resolutions?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville. Start with the appointment to the Parking Authority Board. I didn't know there was a vacancy on the Parking Authority Board. Can you tell me why there's a vacancy and who left? What's that?
I believe... Does anybody know that answer? Jack, do you know? What do you know?
I don't know.
I don't know that answer, Mr. Crowe. I know that... Do you believe Mr. Barber?
I heard it the other day.
I do not know that answer, sir.
Okay. Does anyone know the person being appointed?
Andrew?
I agree.
Yes. And do you have anything to say about her? Do you think she would be good?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Is it true she would be the first woman to be on the Parking Authority Board?
No, I think so.
Okay, so there's been a woman on in the past?
Yes.
Okay. I just said, in my time, I haven't seen a woman on the board. It's good to know.
God knows what it means, Mr. Crowe.
Okay, so I think it's a little concerning that we don't know who's leaving the Parking Authority Board, but so long as we know who's being...
I believe, Mr. Anderson, it might be Mr. Barber, if that is needed.
Okay. But it's good that at least somebody knows the person you're about to appoint. How about Bobby Burgeal to the Cable TV Advisory Board? Does anybody know him?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Good guy for the job.
I think so.
And Anthony Jones for the Board of Ethics? Is that known?
Yes, I know him.
Okay. And is it ethical person?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me, I don't... I'm not familiar with Mr. Jones. Is he... What might he... I know him from, has he worked for the city or government and politics?
I actually know his wife better, and I know her from city politics.
Okay. Is he related to the person in the mayor's office, Kevin Jones?
No, not aware of.
The next one is 21. Oh, I'm sorry, I pretty much understand that one. 22 is the Public Works Garage. What's going on there? Is there an environmental investigation?
Who can answer that?
I could start. Mr. Goulden could help me. Connection with the city's remediation of that site under the direction of the DPD along with our consulting engineers. There's something that has to be filed called a deed notice with the county clerk, which is public notice to the world that this particular site has undergone remediation. And a portion of the site is going to be deed or use restricted in the deed notice because of the levels of contamination. You could remediate the property to one degree, but with respect to certain types of development or use, it's not permitted because of the levels that are still existing. This particular resolution authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to sign that deed notice that's required by the DPD. If I left anything out, if I misspoke, Mr. Goulden could correct me.
Anything to add to that, Mr. Goulden?
No, that is fine.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe.
And so, what type of contamination is this, and what is the cause of the contamination?
The matter of difference...
Mr. Goulden?
There were many underground fuel tanks removed over the years. There were... Just recently, we removed, about two years ago, two 8,000 gallon tanks. Fortunately, those tanks were in good condition when we removed them, and there was no contamination. So, the contamination that's there were tanks that we removed back in the early 90s. There were some contaminants related to fuel oil identified. And one of the requirements that the state allows you to do is you don't have to remove the contamination. But as Mr. Shammy said, if you should develop it under certain conditions, you may have to remove it in the future.
Thank you.
Okay. Is it safe for people to be working at that location?
Yes.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, the only other question I have is what... What is the city going to ultimately do with that? Are you going to continue using it for what it is? A public building?
As far as I know, I haven't heard anything different than the Public Works, yes.
Okay. Are there any other things the DPD is requiring the city to do besides the deed restrictions?
Any other things it wants to do?
There are still monitoring wells on the site. We may have to monitor them over time. But again, that's all laid out in the DPD Site Remediation Document that we have.
Okay. And I'm just concerned because I think there's a creek nearby. Does this affect water in any way? The water quality in that creek might be going downstream and somewhere else, is this...
Not that it's been identified as of this time.
Has anybody...
Testing was performed, and it's fine for now.
Thank you. I think I've asked about this before, but I forget. 524, where is the new police impound lot going to be?
Try adjacent...
Try adjacent to the existing DPW building. There's a vacant... It appears to be a vacant lot. It's all part of the DPW property. And that impound, there are... In that area, between there and the building that has the carpets off on all the time along Jersey Avenue.
All right. Thank you. The 27 is the cable agreement with Cable Vision. Can you tell me what that's going to mean for residents? Does that mean there's going to be new services available to them that were not available before along these streets? Or is this just going to benefit the hospital?
No. Yes, Mr. Sham. That's just they're installing new fiber optic cable that's supposed to metal. So there's fiber optics in that area.
For everyone in the area.
For everyone in that area.
For everyone in the areas. New fiber optic cable for everybody in the area is going to be.
Okay, so what does that mean for the Cable Vision user? Are they going to be able to have more options, or are they going to just get a better quality picture?
Well, the fiber optic gives you a faster internet, you know, the BIOS type of thing. A lot of areas with that, with Verizon, they don't have it. Certain areas of David Jersey, so I guess it's getting in that in that area, so you can have BIOS.
Okay, so even though it says Cable Vision here, their competitor Verizon is going to be able to offer their services to the people in that neighborhood?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I think, I'll just be very quick and frank. Choices are good. I support having more choices. So, Cable Vision having a monopoly on New Brunswick is not a good thing. So anything that gives people another choice is a good thing.
We have choices in New Brunswick with cable.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, buddy.
He said there are different choices for cable in New Brunswick.
As far as I know, I only have one.
You can get DirecTV, you can get Dish Network, they're all different.
Sure, but not internet.
There is BIOS in parts of cities.
Yeah, there is BIOS in parts of cities.
Not all of the cities, the parts of the city. They're expanding.
They're expanding.
Okay, that's great. This is a good thing. We're in agreement. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Generator Project, I just want to know, has that already been done? Is this just basically being reimbursed for it? The generators for the water treatment?
I think we're doing that right now, right? This is the process that's going on right now. We're applying for the grant money. And we're in the process of taking bids or the bids have been made, I forget.
Okay. When it says execute a sub-grant agreement with New Jersey and the Office of Emergency Management, what exactly is the sub-grant agreement, you know, changed or due?
It refers to an agreement between the state and the federal FEMA people. That's sub-grant, or sub-grantee, under that particular agreement.
So there's three people involved, just the federal government, the state government, there's municipal government. So everybody's a sub of the sub.
That's an easy way to explain it.
Thank you.
Gotcha. The next one is Relaxation of the Noise Ordinance on College Avenue. This is the site, correct, where someone fell into the construction site?
This is the Hillell project down there, College Avenue. Someone fallen in the site there. Does anybody know? Is that true? Mr. Patterson?
I... My recollection is, frankly, I think Mr. Cradaville reported on it that someone had one too many and fell in the hole.
I don't know about the first part, but I do recall a fire department rescued someone from who'd fallen into a trench in this project. Is that correct? Maybe you can ask the fire director.
Director, are you there, fire director? Did someone fall into the hole on College Avenue, or the fire department did rescue?
Not somebody that rescued. They had a guy that fell in the hole up by the Jewish building up there.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, so has the city investigated how that happened? What led up to that? How that was even possible?
Has the city investigated? Why did that happen? I... That's a Rutgers project, I believe, right? That's on Rutgers property. They don't go through typical city inspections. They go through the DCA, through all the inspections at Rutgers campus. They're not obligated to New Brunswick Municipal inspectors. The DCA takes care of all their inspections on the campus of Rutgers.
Okay, I could be wrong, but I don't believe it's a Rutgers project. I believe it's actually a private organization that has the... Rutgers is part of its name. But Rutgers Hillell is a private project.
They're a private organization, yes.
Right. Seventy College Avenue LLC. So surely that's not Rutgers. So what has the city done to make sure that this doesn't happen at other construction sites? Or find out if there was something wrong being done that'd be, you know, reprimanded and not happen again?
Does anybody know?
22nd.
Does anybody know who did it, if anybody went over there? I believe Mr. Crowe was right. It's a private thing, so we should have our municipal inspectors on it.
Any of those type of incidents are investigated by OSHA.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And is there anybody aware of the results?
Does anybody know of any results from that? We'll try to find out for you, Mr. Crowe, through our sub code.
Okay. I'm just... My concern is that we shouldn't be approving relaxations of our city ordinances for people who might not already be following the ordinances. If there was a problem and the site was left in a condition where someone could get in there and do damage to themselves or to the site, that's a problem. And we shouldn't be approving relaxations of our laws for them unless we're certain that they're going to abide by the ones that they have to. And I just have one more question.
Yes, sure.
Thank you. The last one is the Land Use Ordinance amendments to it being referred to the Planning Board. Can somebody speak to what the purpose of that is?
536, for review?
Yes, the final one.
It's a statutory requirement with respect to the referral by this council to the Planning Board for review. As far as the substance of the proposed amendments, I can't speak to them. I have not given any great detail. Mr. Patterson is here, I know. You might be familiar with them. But I... My recollection from seeing the proposed documents is pretty extensive. So I don't know if Mr. Patterson has the ability to remember more, but...
Mr. Crowe?
Yeah. They're not necessarily extensive. There's a lot of them. But it's just an update of the existing ordinance. The Land Use Ordinance is what governs the technical requirements for site plans and subdivisions. Updating it to catch up with a couple of statutory changes that have been made about reports that are required. Trying to track some of the statutory language a little bit better regarding escrow payments and so forth. Moving a couple of sections around so it's organized a little better. Mostly technical changes, and adding a couple of things that have been statute over the last couple of years that have been updated to catch up with some of that stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowe. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? Anybody on resolutions? Sealy, ma'am?
Move the resolutions. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Would anybody like to address the council, the city? Step up to the microphone. You have five minutes, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Daniel Moore, 188 Rutgers Street. Today, I'm here, must be situation with holes today. Because I'm here due to where I witnessed a child falling from a big hole on Livingston Avenue, Livingston and Comstock this morning. I have the pictures right here to show you how deep this hole is. I guess it's the cover that broke up off of top of the water main. But due to how the hole is so, so deep, how the kids are falling. So I'm hoping you would do something right away. First thing right away tomorrow. Why, you're having a couple of pictures in here, why? I happened to get the children when they're falling.
Could you give us images of your car?
Oh, yes, I'll give you all the pictures, no problem. But, I mean, wow, these are real... If you're a walker, normally you see a lot of potholes where the roads are bad in a walkway, so you'd also look into that. But like I said, I hope first thing in the morning you do respond to this. Like I said, where so many kids fell because this hole is so deep in a walk zone, where the crosswalk guard had to lead the children not to even walk across this.
Definitely, uh...
I don't know, we should wait till tomorrow morning.
And I mean, this is very deep.
They will have somebody get out there right after the meeting.
Because like I said, I have a picture here where I happened to catch where a child did fall.
We'll get right on this, ma'am.
Okay, and then my other question, do you really feel that with the new pattern with Livingston Avenue, Livingston, Comstock, and Delaware, do you feel that it's safe now? Do you feel that Livingston Avenue is safe to walk across?
Yes, Ms. Garladi?
There's going to be another public hearing about the redevelopment of Livingston Avenue. There had been one at the Red Shaw School location. And there's now gonna be another one scheduled, I think sometime late June, early July, to look at the plans to restructure Livingston Avenue that had input from the community and to gain additional input to the community. So I would urge you, when that plan gets vetted again, that you attend that meeting as well. So the cap, this, the structure of what Livingston Avenue looks like right now is going to be different. This is an interim solution.
Okay, well, just in case I cannot make it, do you save the pictures that I just give to you? Do you save the pictures?
Yes.
At all times and where I give you the pictures to show where, what, it's not, it's not good at all. The main problem with that, that's where you have a light. When the light turns green, what are you gonna do? You're gonna press your accelerator and what, by the time you get to Livingston and Delaware, what, you still have two cars. So that's where, like I said, I'm not gonna say I can make it or not, but for you to look into what I'm saying, how all the other sides are good because there's no light. But Livingston Sanford, like I said, when the light turns green, same thing with Remsen and Nassau where it doesn't, it caused so many accidents. And wow, I happened to see this morning, this morning, wow, must not be too good due to where someone knocked down the crosswalk sign. A car hit that over this morning, or excuse me, that Monday morning. But the pictures are here to say that too. So like I said, with Comstock, I hope you do take care of that immediately. The pictures of a child that's falling right there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the council this evening?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville. Just on the topic of Livingston Avenue, I know there's some problems with some of the pedestrian actuation signals, the button, the walk buttons. Where should we report that? I know the city's done a good job of trying to get reports of things like lights that are out.
We've reported right here. Do you have any locations?
Sedam and Livingston, one of the buttons is kinda stuck. And I know that's not the only one.
I understand, excuse me, Mr. Council President, that engineering handles that traffic signal control.
Okay, we will, I think engineering, we'll take care of it.
Great. I have several outstanding questions that have not been answered. I'd like to know, when is the city gonna release its annual tavern report? The police department got to release it.
The tavern report is out to the city council members. I have it sitting right here, Mr. Cradville. It contains Police Officer DeBros' report regarding the 2015 tavern report.
Okay, is it available for the public, Mr. Shami?
Well, it's available for the public if it were open. I understand Mr. Cradville may have requested it. It's a pretty thick book, as you can see here. We didn't make hundreds of copies, but I'm sure if Mr. Cradville wanted a copy, we could put something together.
Yeah, I would just prefer an electronic copy, I've been asking about it.
It's not electronic form, that's the whole thing.
Comes in that filing report.
Really, that's the only way. This is not, the city's not digital in 2015?
I have it here, I don't, Mr. Torese could probably.
I think we have it in digital form.
Oh, thank you. The sooner the better, I have been asking about it.
Okay, Mr. Cradville.
Appreciate that. Is it true that there was a school nurse that was assaulted or robbed or mugged at the Roosevelt School this week?
Does anybody know that answer? I have not heard anything. Captain Miller, have you heard that?
I haven't heard it, I don't know.
Was there any police activity?
I have no clue. By what was the date?
It was the same date that I sent Captain Miller email, I believe it was.
Mr. Cradville sent me a lot of emails. Again, I don't work for Mr. Cradville, I'm very busy.
All right, all right, that's all, that's all.
No, it's very funny, I agree. It's hilarious that I'm asking whether a school nurse was mugged or not, because I received a tip.
We're not mugging.
And, listen.
We'll get you the information. Now, no one knows, I have not heard that, no one's, we don't know if that's true, we'll get you the information.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's not like I send a lot of long emails. Many of those are usually one sentence with one question. And if you don't have the answer, just say so. Just say, "I don't have the answer, Charlie, I don't know." But I get zero responses, what I've been getting usually. And I think the city deserves better. Was there a motor vehicle accident or a crash involving a fire truck last week?
Was your director still here?
No, I'm over the question.
Was there a motor vehicle accident involving a fire truck last week?
No. Neither was it.
Neither was it.
Was there a motor vehicle accident that involved any city vehicles last week?
Was there a motor, can anybody tell me if there was any? I mean, Mr. Cradville, I'd be more helpful here.
I understood that there was a fire truck involved, fire truck might not have been, might not have crashed.
Hold on, yes, sir.
I can help you with this. What actually happened was a truck and trailer went down a roadway that was cul-de-sac. It hit other vehicles, private vehicles. A fireman called it in, and that's how it came across. There was no fire vehicles. There was no city vehicles.
All private vehicles. And this is, what is the street, do you know?
It was South Pennington.
South Pennington, okay. I don't think that's the one I'm talking about, but I'll get some more facts and then keep asking. Just a few issues, you know, I've been out, meeting with a lot of people and people have been bringing up issues to me today. One that I heard about at the new Red Shaw School is parking for teachers. Is it, I mean, is there really not enough parking for teachers? That teachers are getting tickets at the Red Shaw School? Because those trailers are still there and that trailer's trailer was supposed to become a parking lot and it never happened?
I don't know that answer, Mr. Cradville. I mean, it's a board event, I don't know what they're doing with the teachers there and the trailers. But you can ask the board event that question. I haven't heard anything in what you just spoke about. So I would find out from the board event and we'll see what's.
Yeah, maybe the board event doesn't even know. But the teachers themselves are getting parking tickets, is what I've been informed by someone who's very familiar with that area. And I just think that's wrong, you know? Yeah. Just like I said, the Fresh Grocer people shouldn't be charged for parking. The teachers shouldn't be getting tickets, they're teachers, they're doing good work. And if the parking authority can help it, there's gotta be some way to make it so they don't get tickets. So rather than putting the ball back in my court, asking me to go to a board event meeting, maybe you could go to the parking authority where you are very familiar and get them to stop giving tickets to the teachers. Would you be willing to do that?
No, I don't have to go to the parking authority, maybe I'll find out what's going on, we'll find out. I don't think they should be getting tickets either, but if you're parking illegally, I want to know why they're doing that. It's just worth, there's gotta be more to the story than what you're saying.
Well, it's not.
Most of the time.
More to the story is that there's not enough parking.
Okay.
So really, we need a parking lot for the teachers.
We will look into it, sir.
Okay. But at the least, we can do is not ticket. And they should park legally, of course.
First of all, how does the parking authority enforcement agency know it's a teacher's car? All they know is that it's a car that's parked illegal. They don't know it's Mrs. Jones that teaches the fourth grade. And all they see is the car.
Exactly. So there's gotta be a way for the parking authority enforcement agents to know that. There's gotta be a sign that you give the teachers so that they can, you know, not get tickets. There's gotta be a system, there's a way to do this. It's possible. I wanna ask about these buses, I'm not sure whether it's a city bus or a county bus, but does anybody, maybe Mr. Patterson might know, know about which buses have low floors so that people who have handicaps can get in them more easily? And which buses are still using steps?
Which buses are you talking about? The Brunswick Shuttle or which shuttle is, which ones you speak to now?
I wanted to know if there's any buses at all that are still using the steps instead of the lower floors.
Mr. Patterson, do you have any information about the platform of the bus?
I don't have any specific information. I believe they all are handicapped accessible either with a lift. I think Mr. Cradville may be talking about either kneeling buses or so, which are the larger buses are kneeling. Or some of them are, but I believe the Brunswick Shuttle has a wheelchair lift on the rear of that. The county's buses, they use a different style of bus. I can't say specifically on that, but I believe they are handicapped accessible. But the county runs those programs as part of their larger county-wide shuttle system. And you could ask them over at the county as to exactly what they provide for that.
Okay.
Whether they're kneeling or not or low rise, I don't think they are that, they might not have that.
Okay, it might be the county, no, they're used heavily by senior citizens, so it doesn't make sense to have stairs. And I guess I just wanted to finish up by saying a couple of things. I think that, you know, it was very disgraceful what the council did passing that unconstitutional law. You were advised of an opinion from a court that does not cover this area. Mr. Shami will admit that the circuit court ruling he cited is from a different circuit. It's not from New Jersey. It's not from this area. And the law you passed is onerous. And I hope that when you go to sleep at night, you think about it. And that you think about the people that are in New Brunswick who might not be able to have a place, a nice place to sleep like you do, might not be able to have a meal, and might just need fifty cents or a dollar, and cannot legally ask their fellow human beings to help them because of you. The mayor signed this law, it's unconstitutional, the city's probably gonna get sued, and everybody's gonna look really bad. And I think that's disgraceful, especially in the context of residents coming repeatedly to ask for a common sense reform like paid sick leave. Councilwoman Escobar said that she will support this. You, sir, Mr. Council President, have said you called it a great idea. Why won't you pass paid sick leave?
Mr. Cradville, we're working on it. There's questions by other council members, there's questions by the mayor. We're coming together, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting. We're working towards that goal.
Okay, well, for now, I'm gonna.
We're working towards, we're working towards, we're working towards a goal of coming to a end and figure it all out. What that means, I don't know. But we're all, everybody has different questions and everybody has different ideas. And Mr. Rowe understands that and he's willing to meet. And I know that's gonna happen in the near future.
Well, for now, I'm gonna say that you're stifling it. Because you had the chance to pass a law that stifles the poor and you took it right away. First reading, second reading, boom, mayor signed it, it's the law. You can't ask for a quarter on the street if you're near an ATM, if you're near a payphone, if you're near a theater, if you're near a bank. You can't ask for change at night. And now, the ordinance that the people truly want you to pass, you are stifling. And I will say it, and I will continue to say it, that you're saying it, that you are stifling this law, that you are hindering this, and you're holding back the city of New Brunswick. And I hope that you prove me wrong. There's one way to do it, and it's to pass a paid sick leave law.
Thank you, Mr. Cradville. Thank you. Thank you.
I was aware of the ordinance that was passed about Panhandle laws. So maybe I have a suggestion. It's possible you could create a grid for the homeless and the less fortunate, they'll know. Because many of them may not have access to the ordinance and its specifics and telling them where they are allowed to Panhandle where and what places where they are prohibited in New Brunswick to Panhandle. Is that a possibility?
It's not a bad idea. We'll look into it. But we'll get a card or something where it says where you can do it, where you can't do it, or something like that. Okay? We will look into it.
Awesome. I have a little information on the transformer that blew on Monday. I was riding down into Nelson Street, and there was just smoke and fire everything. And I wonder like what was taking place, like what actually happened? Was it a transformer blew or was it, I thought it was a bomb.
Yeah, my understanding is that it transformed blue in the basement of the post office.
That's correct.
Outside wall. Excuse me, could anybody talk on the board specifically, please?
Transformer blue in an outside vault.
Outside of the post office. Thank you.
This has nothing to do with, you know, the actual transformer that blew. I'm glad everybody got out of that job safely. But that day, Monday, was June the first. It's a historical day for a lot of African Americans. Quote-unquote, our Aboriginals are, you know, Moors. And that historical day was the day, I wonder if I could, am I allowed to speak to you guys directly? I have to speak through you.
Through me, really?
Okay. I'd like to ask, Mr. Shami, is he aware of the historical day that was, took place June first, nineteen twenty-one?
I was born in nineteen twenty-one, but I, my history's not that good. I was starting to think of what you referred to, but Mr. Marquez is old in the name. Yes, I'm old. That was the unfortunate incident in Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Yes.
With the black community in Tulsa that were raided, haunted, and many, many thousands of people were killed in a very upscale black community in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And it was just a sheer act of hatred.
Yeah, that was a historical event. Actually, I'll get into more in depth, I'll get more in depth with it. This was the first time in history that America bombed Americans on American soil. First time in history was Tulsa, Oklahoma. Now, Tulsa, Oklahoma was a small town that during the time of the depression, they were thriving force. They had their own airport, they had their own hospitals, they had their own law service, they had their own ambulances, they had their own movie theaters. And it was a time at the Great Depression where a lot of white Americans were envious of it and took it upon themselves to bomb the entire community. It happened in Haiti, North Carolina, too. That's just one example of the things that happened throughout the country and around that time. So it's like a stigma when black people start to flourish in the community. It's in the back of their head that that community will get bombed. That's an actual fact. Never has America bombed a community full with Americans on American soil. We have more empathy about bombings that took place outside of this country. But we have no knowledge of what took place in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And the reason I asked Mr. Shami that was because I want him to be more compassionate about race relations. And you're of, I would say, South Asian descent?
Lebanese, Mr. Shami.
You're Lebanese?
I'm Black.
Okay. A lot of people come to this country and they're not aware of American history.
Well, I was born in this country.
Okay, well, the people before you didn't teach you American history. All the educational platform you went to didn't brush you on American history. And the reason I'm addressing you is because we've been through a lot of situations in this country that, you know, you're, people are totally oblivious of. You know, I'm, huh? People are totally oblivious of. The reason why I'm going directly at you is because last council meeting when I was here, I asked Mr. Egan a question about Mr. Wallace and his racial slurs. And you gave, instructed Mr. Egan that he not answer the question after Mr. Wallace was already disciplined and then no further discipline could happen.
Personnel.
So that made me think that you weren't compassionate about the situation that take place with African Americans.
Not at all, Mr. Pittman. I was advising council president and councilless to the operation of the law and that personnel matters involving disciplinary matters against employees cannot be discussed in public under what's called a rice, actually it was a case study, the rice rule.
Can you do me a favor? Can you, being a born and raised in America, can you do some American history?
I just taught American history, Mr. Pittman.
And you don't, you wanna wear Tulsa, Oklahoma?
My recollection of that was obviously not too good, but.
Are you aware of the Jim Crow era?
Mr. Pittman, through the chair.
Are you aware of the Jim Crow era?
I'm aware of that, yes.
Okay, what's your opinion, Mr. Pittman?
I'm not gonna give you my thing. You wanna talk about history after the meeting? We'll be more than happy to do that with you, but.
Mr. Pittman, through the chair.
I just think you should concentrate on city business as opposed to my knowledge of America.
That is city business. Please, Mr. Pittman. A transformer blew during a historical time and you weren't aware of that historical moment in history? Where America bombed Americans for the first time in history? That was the connection. Am I right on?
That's your connection.
Not that, please.
It's your time, you've got the floor, you can talk about whatever you want, sir.
All right. I'll just leave, I'll just mention this. I was invited last Thursday to North Brunswick, to the church in North Brunswick. Pastor, bishop, sorry, bishop in law invited me to a community forum, a public forum that they had. But I got there, to my surprise, there was a police director in North Brunswick. And he stood in front of the church and he offered, allowed the community to ask him any question we wanted to ask whatsoever as far as police-community relationship goes. any question we wanted to ask whatsoever as far as police community relations goes. And I would like to know, would there ever possibly be a time where our police director, the Brunswick's police director, give the community an opportunity to see if he can better police community relations? Now, the thing is, when I was there, it's ironic because I had, this is my second time engaging with Mr. McCormick. And the first time was, you know, it was a well-respected, it was a respectful meeting. We sat down and, you know, we got to some resolve. And, you know, this time, he said something that was very disturbing to me. He told me, you know, I, because I came to the council meeting after I had the engagement with him, and I mentioned how the engagement went, and I said that I wish that maybe one day New Brunswick could possibly, the police director can engage like that. Well, somehow New Brunswick contacted him and said that he shouldn't be communicating with me to some sort. And I felt that that was, that was crazy because, you know, when I, that, you know, that told, that told, that told me that, you know, you got to scare them. You got to scare them. And what's, and the scary part is that I didn't give you nothing to be scared of yet. For you to contact the police director and tell him not to communicate with me because there's a possibility that New Brunswick residents could ride through North Brunswick and get harassed, or North Brunswick, or someone from South Brunswick, Holland Park, anyone could ride through New Brunswick and possibly get harassed. And if you have a police director that's willing to say he tore my apartment, what's the problem? Because I know that they are corrupt police officers. But my thing is, all police officers are corrupt. I'll show you what you possibly won't understand about police officers, and you show me what I possibly won't understand about community residents. And you go to an office and tell them that, you go to the director and tell him not to deal with me, that shame on New Brunswick. Every police officer in uniform should be embarrassed, every New Brunswick police officer in uniform should be embarrassed by the conduct because they're being showed up by another police department that's right next to them, and they want to change that situation. That's sad on behalf of the, me being a New Brunswick resident, that's sad on behalf of the New Brunswick Police Department. And your department did that. And I think that you should get to the bottom and finding out who actually was the one who came to Mr. McCormick and said that. Because what if he possibly didn't have any other contact with me on the advice of New Brunswick, on the office direction of the Brunswick? Then we would possibly not have any police communication in North Brunswick. That, that could have possibly happened. So I think that you should probably do some due diligence and find out what officer or officers had the gall to go to a, a willing police director that's willing to sit down with the community resident and the entire, the entire North Brunswick was ever willing to speak to him and talk to him, why would they want that to change? Now, that's their corrupt.
Can you ask me a question, sir?
I'm, 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 no, I'm asking, would you get to?
I'll, I'll, I'll ask him right now. Captain Miller, do you know of any police officers who have gotten in contact with, with, was it Director McCormick in North Brunswick without not speaking with Mr. Pittman?
I do not know of any officers that, that I contacted. Director McCormick had told, or told him not to speak to anyone.
Can you look into it? Please look into it. Did you ask some of your officers or yet? Mr. Pittman, hold on. Mr. Pittman, I mean, you have, you know, you do give us these allegations. I mean, who, who said this? I mean, do you have any?
Mr. McCormick!
He told you that?
Yes.
Okay. I'll be fine again, I'll be fine. Say this, we're doing so good, we're not yelling at each other, sir. Let's just not have one meeting without anybody yelling at each other.
All right.
Just give it a try and see how it goes.
No, but you said I come with allegations.
No, no, I just want to know.